Okay. We are now recording.
Very good.
Thank you. And, okay, so I had a chance to view the video of your meeting and hear the discussion. And I have a couple of pieces of information that might be helpful to all of you. So, policy governance is a model for governance. The only thing that is policy governance are the 10 principles that you have on the page in front of you. All of the work that we've been doing in the policy manual becomes your work, and when you adopt it, it becomes the Marquette Township Governance Policies. It is, it is, and the idea is that, first of all, anything that we put in the policy manual, they're not rules. They are, I guess, they're more than guidelines, but they are a way to express the model. And if you don't like the words that are there, you can change the words anytime you want to, with the concept, though, that you want to be in alignment with these 10 principles. So if you're living the 10 principles and you translate that, translate the principles into your policy manual, you're basically doing policy governance, but you're doing it in your own customized way. And that is perfectly okay. That's the way it should be. It's got, you know, the governance needs to match, you know, the context of your organization. So I just wanted to make that clear. And the language that you have on this page, you'll notice the first three principles are about the board's culture. The next four are about the structural elements of the policy manual. And the last three are about the board's relationship to Randy, to your township management team. In the township world, we actually have to refer to the township management team because the clerk and the treasurer are, have to work with your township manager as a team because you don't have, Randy can't be accountable for the things that happen in the clerk and the treasurer's departments. So we often refer to the team, the management team, which includes your township manager, the clerk, and the treasurer. So that is one thing that we do change, we modify in the policy manual that you have to accommodate the context of township elections and township governance. So, the other thing that I wanted to just respond to from the discussion that I picked up. You asked a lot about, you know, why are we doing this? And what are we going to get because we're doing this? And I have to say that what you will get if you, if you practice this model of governance, what the possibilities are, first of all, you're going to have far more accountability in, in the township for actions taken. And the reason that you're going to have more is because you've expressed your expectations. And, or you will be, and we're going to be reviewing those today. And because you're defining a whole system, you can govern without being just reactive to crisis. You're actually going to be monitoring to make sure that everything that happens in the township is on the playing field that you put in writing in your policy manual. So, that's one thing. The second thing that you'll be able to do that's different than what you currently do is because you're not spending all of your time as a board on operational matters, it allows you the opportunity to explore the future. Marquette Township is changing a lot. And, you know, you as a board need to be, need to have space in your agendas to talk about, you know, the implications for what is happening in, you know, in your area. With the population changes, with the change in retail, with the change in the business community, how is that all going to impact the township? And as long as, if you are operating from a traditional way of governing, you're going to be focused on what's, what's happening now, rather than what's happening, what's coming from the future. And because of the way policy governance allows for your township manager to make decisions that you don't need to be involved with, it frees up space in your meetings to talk about the future and to really look at what's coming at you that's disruptive to the way, you know, life in Marquette Township has been. And to really, to have time to talk about and think about, what does that mean for you as a township? And what does the township need to create in order to be ready for a positive response to those things that are coming at you? So, that's one of the huge differences that I see for boards that go into policy governance. It really gives you, it sets you up to spend a bit of time in the, around the future, rather than always just looking at what Randy is doing as the township manager. So that, you know, you, when you're looking, when you're always looking internally, you become like the super CEO. And what this policy governance model does, it flips it around so that you are actually a downward extension of the community, rather than an upward extension of the operations of the township. You have statutory duties that force you to be, to be watching what's happening inside the township. But the gift that policy governance creates is it allows you to be outward facing and look outward to the future and think about, how is that future going to impact us? And what do we need to prepare for? So, that's, I, in, in response to the conversation that you had during your meeting, I do offer that as a piece that didn't quite get expressed. Any comments about that?
What I decide, what I, not decided. What I wanted to find out is, I was for this before, and I'm, I still like to program. But there's several of them who got out of it and failed doing it. And that's what I wanted to, I talked to supervisors from two different ones. I talked to managers, past trustees, and why did, why did it happen? So we don't do the same thing and have the same problem if we can, you know, you don't want to keep on doing the same thing wrong over and over. So, that's what I looked at.
I will tell you that I think where, I don't know if they will tell you this, but they didn't keep up with it. They didn't keep learning about it. Union Township had, got a new township manager who didn't understand it and has not supported the board in its, in it. And Meridian Township, the, the two people who were the champions, which were the supervisor, Susan McGillicuddy, and the township manager, Jerry, can't remember his last name in the moment, they both left. And so there was nobody there that really championed the continued practice of it. And as a result, they both have been falling away. I was recently at the Union Township, you know, the last few months. And there are some, some of the board are absolutely passionate about it. The supervisor is not. He's new to the job and he really doesn't understand it. And so I think that's, that's a part of it as well.
But, any way you cut it, the two references that you made, townships that embraced and were used as references. The only two we had that our trustee went after and asked questions said that they didn't have it anymore. Do you have any other townships that you have passed this on to that you would give as a reference today?
Well, when you asked me about references last time, and I gave you the names of those two, I also said that I don't know where they are within policy governance because they haven't, you know, they, they, you know, I haven't had communication with them. So, just to be fair. At the current time, off the top of my head, I am not, I, there are no other townships that I am working with at the current time that I could attest to say they are practicing it in the, in a pretty solid way. I can tell you that, as, as was suggested, MTA, the Townships Association, just adopted it. And because they just adopted it, I do expect that there will likely be a little bit more activity in the local governments because it's, of its visibility through the Michigan Townships Association. And I also recognize that MTA is an association, not a local government. But, so, John, I can't, I can't give you an active township that's using it. When Meridian adopted it, and this was like around 2009 or '10, they knew that they were the pilot. They knew that they were a pioneer in it. And they practiced it very well for about four years. And then, and then there was a special election that created a little bit of dissension. The individual who was, who came onto the board really didn't, he was very vocal in opposition to using this model. But he didn't understand it. He also didn't know what it was.
I just want us to succeed at this.
Yes, I do too. I do too. And I think that one of the best ways to succeed at it is to keep learning about it. To, you know, if, anytime you want some education on the model, to orient, to, you know, this, this concept of self-assessment, to notice your behavior, notice how the board is in relationship to the policies that we talked about the last time. If you do that, and if you, you know, use that self-assessment as your, kind of your continuous improvement plan, you will be able to do this very well. And boards that take it seriously and work at it do, you know, they do very well.
Well, Susan, we know the dynamics are going to change for the township.
Yep.
In four years, somehow, whether we have staff change over in the middle of that or for the four years. And what I was hoping, the reason I focused on this is because of that, you know, in year nine or whatever I'm in, I've seen that struggle with new boards trying to get their arms around what's happening. And I, I just felt that this would be a good way to have something established for the new group, whoever, you know, staff-wise and board-wise. I don't know how many of us will be here, even the volunteers. We don't know how that structure's going to change.
Right. And recognize what, what we are creating here is a, it's the value system of the township. That's, that's all that this is, and that's a lot, actually. But it's not just, it's not about orders that you're giving to Randy or yourselves. It is defining a value system about what governance is and what it needs to be. And so as, as a, it's kind of like values clarification. These are the things that really, that we care about. These are the things that we believe constitute good governance. And, you know, good governance and risk management over our internal organization. And, and so it's not, it's not just a rulebook. It is, as Lynn, as you described it during the meeting, it's a philosophy toward how you're going to govern. And by putting these things into place, it does allow the board, even a new board, to come in and say, you know what? We, you know, we like a lot of this, but, but I don't quite like the wording in that particular policy. And so I move to change that word. And so you can change the policies as you need to, just the way you pass resolutions now. It is, it is, this is actually very flexible. And what the, it also does for you, it starts you in a shared vision of what governance should be. And if you can all agree that the principles are reasonable, there's no reason why you can't do policy governance.
Well, the answer is, the whole thing, Susan, is that when I was talking to them, they said that the solution is to have a good working board. I feel that we have a good working board here. Like Dave said last time after the meeting, what happens when we go, what happens when you get a new board, you know? So I think it's important that we go through this, and rather than try to justify it, I think we just continue on.
Okay. Is everybody? Are you there? Can you see me?
Susan, I just don't want to waste any more time trying to justify it. I think we've got two hours.
Well, hold on here.
Listen here, bitch.
Can you hear me?
Last hour?
Well, that traffic down the highway was shaking in the building.
Damn Russian. We try to come over.
It's got a...
I just got to move it over here a little bit. Hold on, Susan, I just got to get our video.
Can you at least hear me?
She had audio, is audio gone as well?
Well, this, she can hear us, but we...
It's all because we complained.
Sorry!
I just got to plug it in.
Yeah. Look up the lights, David.
Make sure he doesn't drag it off.
Well, there goes policy governance.
He's won.
Now I just got to connect it.
With your systems.
Looks like you have power back anyway.
We're back. There you are.
Now can you hear me?
I just got a...
Here, dude. I can hear her, so, can you?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Randy? Randy, can you hear me?
I don't think she can hear us.
I can hear you.
No, I don't think so either.
Yes, I can.
Be careful which one it is.
Can you hear us now, Susan?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We're back. Let me hold on here. Let me see if I get my microphone back. I just have to change the microphone here. All right, Susan, we're back.
All right, can you hear me now? Oh, okay, I heard every word you said.
Good.
And thank you for not saying anything disparaging. Except for, except for the comment, oh, well, there goes policy governance. Okay, so I'd like to go through section two and then section one. Section two of the policy manual are all of, it is basically setting the playing field for your township management. It is defining what is not okay. And they can basically do anything that they want to as long as it's on the playing field that's defined here in this policy manual. So, let's take a look at what's here. And I'm just noticing there's kind of a weird thing here.
So there's structural stuff.
Okay, so, yeah, this is part of the structural, and these are the executive limitations. Couple of things about them. They basically limit the unilateral authority of your township management. We're going to define in here what they can't do. And if you don't, if you don't say that they can't do something, then they can. Now, I want you to pay attention to what, you know, what's in these policies. This is, this area of policy really is about your risk management. And just like the other two sections, the Policy 2.0 acts like an umbrella policy to all of the other policies. So, you know, you'll notice here, and in the language of 2.0, the global liability and risk management. It's basically, you know, they can't cause or allow any practice, activity, decision, or circumstance which is unlawful, imprudent, or in violation of commonly accepted public and administrative practice and professional ethics. So, that's very broad. And in policy governance, you want to stop making policy when you can accept any reasonable interpretation. But I think you want to say some things about how we treat people, how we deal with money, how we deal with the assets of the township. So, all of the following policies are about what you would think would be imprudent or unethical. We never have to talk about what's unlawful because that's really clear. But what is imprudent and unethical are what we want to focus on. So, Policy 2.1, the treatment of constituents. Now, notice in the very, in the broadest policy, the former board wanted to make sure that nothing happened in how we treat people to put people, to make them feel unsafe, undignified, unclear, unprofessional, indirect, untimely, inaccurate, incomplete. It's a, it's a laundry list. Of all the things that we don't want, the, you know, to create, the conditions that we don't want to create for people that are in the voting public. So, yes?
I know it's disrespectful too.
Disrespectful?
So, because of the way it's worded, that would not be the appropriate word.
Disrespected.
Okay, yeah.
So do you all agree that those are all things you don't want to have happen in, you know, that, the way we treat people? You don't want to put anybody in conditions that would refer to any of those?
Think we hit them all?
You got a whole laundry list. I, I don't know if you need all of them. If you do, that's fine. As long as you all agree that these are the, the values that we really want to be, you know, lived in Marquette Township. That's what matters. Because all of these are about values.
How do you define disrespected?
Well, that's going to be, you know, for your township manager to decide what does that mean in terms of our, how we do business. So, you stop making policy when you can accept any reasonable interpretation. So part of what Randy is going to have to do as you, if you, when you adopt, if you adopt policy governance, he's going to have to tell you what this means inside the township government. Inside, you know, and so, you know, how, how does he define disrespected? And, you know, and what do we have in place that would assure that people are treated, you know, with, you know, in a respectful way? So ultimately, Randy is going to be defining what these words mean inside the township.
And that would be in the personnel policies? Is that where you would define that?
Well, he's going to define them as it relates to, I mean, some of these might be in the personnel policies. But he's going to be defining these in a report that comes to you that will tell you how he is living this policy. And if you find that explanation to be reasonable and that he has data to show compliance, then it's all good.
Because every one of these is up to interpretation.
Exactly.
Or unprofessional. My determination's going to be different than someone else's.
Right. But the one that matters is Randy's. And when Randy defines it, then the question for you is, is this a reasonable interpretation? Because in the policies in section four, specifically that we looked at before, you agree that you will accept any reasonable interpretation. So when you get Randy's report about how the township is living these, these values, you know, you got to look at, is that a reasonable interpretation? And if it is, then you accept the report. You know, and you got to look at, you accept it as a reasonable interpretation. Then he also has to ask to identify data that would demonstrate that we're actually truly living this. It's not just words, but we're truly living this. And so he would offer that as well. So that might be the results of a survey. It might be a way that he's tracking customer complaints. It might be, there are a number of ways that he can identify whether or not constituents are being treated in a way that is, you know, that pushes up against any one of these words.
Susan? Sorry.
Go ahead.
When we come up against this, once we get it into place, especially, how would we change this? If we find a word, or a phrase, or an action that we don't think is respectable, do we put it on the next agenda and talk about changing that policy? Or how, how is, how does it get changed?
You can change your policies just the way you change them now. You know, somebody would offer a motion, and, you know, you want to make sure that you think it through and that it's a shared, a shared value. So it doesn't change. You can use Robert's Rules to change the wording of any of these. You can delete policies. You can add policies. The only shift, or the only concern is, is that when you add policy, that whatever you say in a lower-level policy like 2.11 or 2.12, that it relates to something in the policy that's immediately above it, which is that broader policy of 2.1.
So, Richard, what you're really saying is if you don't agree with something, you want to change it, to bring it up, to discuss it, make a motion to change it if you want.
Absolutely. This is a dynamic document. And it should, it should contain the values that you all share as a board and in alignment with the members of the community.
Any changes goes through the board, like any other change?
Absolutely, of this document.
Is that what we're looking for, Lynn?
I didn't know, you know, if it has to be a big process. But if it's just implementing the policy, then we can...
Explaining it.
Yeah, talk about it at the next meeting, if you're willing.
So is there anything in 2.1, including the lower-level policies, that you have a concern about right now that we should amend?
I have another note too. Again, these are from last year.
Right.
Last time we talked at this. I had 2.1.3. And it says, fail to, this, this is a negative. So, without limiting the scope of the foregoing by this numeration, the management shall not fail to utilize all necessary means to alert constituents of engagement opportunities within a reasonable timeframe, not to conflict with the required postings by law by clerk. But we must have had some kind of discussion at the time that notifying constituents was an issue that was not in here already as far as keeping them aware of what's happening.
So is that a further, a further definition of untimely for constituents?
This is the means. Failure to utilize all necessary means to alert constituents of engagement opportunities. This is what I wrote, but I don't know the context again of what, what the conversation was.
Okay, just, Lynn, just read it for me one more time so that I can write it down here.
Failure, or fail to utilize all necessary means... all necessary means to alert constituents of engagement opportunities within a reasonable timeframe. Then I have in parentheses, not to conflict with the required postings by law of the clerk.
Um, okay. Is, is this something that you all have a, that you have a concern about? Need to be here?
I don't.
Well, Susan, this is Clerk Patari. I think we've done a better job of getting stuff out now than we maybe before. Because now we're mailing things in utility bills. And, um, we're, we're using our Facebook page, and we got email lists, and we're doing a lot of stuff. And I've not heard one resident complain of any member of our staff getting back to them in a timely manner in at least the last few years, in my recollection, so.
But you've got to remember, this is not for us.
Yeah, I think what you're talking about.
This is for the next board and the next staff.
Yeah, for the future.
And we're saying that this is important, that it's done in multiple methods and in timely manner.
But you're talking about two different things. You're talking about responsiveness, and you're talking about proactiveness. Your, your comment is fail to utilize all necessary means to alert them what's coming up. You're talking about responding to things that they've already raised. So, you're talking about two different things.
Well, the question is, do you all want to keep that one in?
I don't have a, you can keep it in. I don't have a problem with it.
We don't have many means. We only have one newspaper. Our electronic Facebook.
So, what if the paper goes away in five years?
Yeah, we use, we use Facebook. We use the electronic media.
There's a method in place to continue that?
No, well, you're talking about having them be engaged in, in their government. What's coming up?
If you want to leave it in, that's fine. It further defines as untimely, and it further defines, um, uh, you know, incomplete. Uh, so, this whole engagement opportunity is something that is not really anticipated in, in any of the other policies. So, if that's something that you want to keep in, that's perfectly okay.
But, but wouldn't the earlier comment made about being unprofessional, wouldn't that have been covered with this all by itself? It would be unprofessional not to do this.
I, I do think that it, it does, uh, because you are advertising engage, ways for people to engage with you. You can be very professional and not do this.
The way we communicate with people in the future will not be what you're doing today, so.
Yeah.
Might just leave it in there if, you know, you can always take it out, like Lynn said, leave it in.
Exactly. You can always delete it if, you know, once you've thought about it and it's like, you know, the big question I have is, does this new, one, 2.1.3 further define something that's up here? You know, in terms of interactions with constituents?
Randy, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm thinking, looking at, looking at, you know, the override, the overriding policy statement.
Because this is something you're going to probably have to train your successor in, the rationale for some of this stuff.
You ought to have adopted this by then.
But I mean, it'll be in place. It will be in place.
Well, you know, that's what Susan's saying is basically is, you know, under the over, overriding policy statement, you know, these are, these are the shall-nots, basically. Yeah, um, you're talking about communication. 2.1.3 is a communication item.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, number, 2.1.2 says kind of the same thing. You, you shall not leave constituents uninformed policy or ways persons to be heard, to believe they are not recorded, reasonable interpretation of their protections.
It's already covered.
Works either way, you know.
I say we move on.
Everybody okay with that? Moving on? Okay.
If we have a better way of wording it, we'll add it into it.
Yeah, before you, you know, that's certainly okay. Uh, okay, so 2.2 is about treatment of staff, paid and volunteer staff. And you'll notice the values that were identified are sort of similar to what we just had in the treatment of constituents. But looking at the, the broader paragraph, not okay to create conditions that are unsafe, unfair, inequitable, undignified, unclear, and professional indirect. It keeps on, but we also added, or violate collective bargaining agreements. So, you'll notice here in 2.2.1, it's about making sure that there are clear personnel rules, that there is a personnel manual, and there are a few things here that you wanted, that were identified to assure we're part of that personnel manual. That's what's in these lower level policies. Uh, and then, uh, these other pieces, discrimination for non-disruptive expression of dissent. So, somebody disagrees with, with your township management, you know, it's not okay to fire them just because they disagree. Um, if, if it's not disruptive. Uh, operating without some cross-training is, it's not okay to operate without that. Uh, this one, the, the one that's in yellow was, uh, added as, after discussions of the former board. Um, they wanted to make sure that it, to assure that staff would always be prepared for emergency situations. So, this is the language that I offered that, to achieve that. And then, you know, to look at, you know, the employees need to understand what the township manager's protections are. And the volunteer staff and contract employees need to be treated the same where it's applicable. Is there anything in this policy that you have a concern about?
I had another one added, and I, I can see how the complexion of the board has changed in the last five years because of what I've written. So, listen to this, because it's, it says, management shall not prevent anyone from providing proof of misdeeds or misconduct of any staff, volunteer, or board committee member, and have it documented. I have a feeling I know where this came from, and I can see how we would not want this to happen. But I don't know how important it is if we, again, this is, this board, you know, I don't disagree with how we're managing. But it's the next board, the next staff that I'm concerned with, that this, that what we put in place doesn't get circumvented.
And, and... So, what, what you described, Lynn, was sort of a whistleblower, um, condition?
Yeah, a protection for staff and committee members.
Okay, so, uh, do we want to add a whistleblower policy in here?
Well, I think that's covered by law anyway. Whistleblowers are covered by law.
Yeah. And you've got up here, you know, that you can't, um, you can't, you know, whatever you do has to be professional and, you know, you've got a lot of descriptions up here that by punishing somebody for giving, you know, handing over evidence, uh, that seems to be kind of in the area of unsafe, unfair, and inequitable. So...
Do we have enough in there to correct it?
I, I think you do, but, um, but if you wanted to add something about whistleblower, uh, you know, participating in whistleblower actions, we can do that.
I think you're cluttering it, yeah.
Okay. Okay, leave it out then?
Uh, I, I have a question about the, the whole thing. It's, is 2.2, the policy title states a treatment of employees and volunteer staff, and then it goes down and never mentions volunteer staff again until 2.2.6.
Right.
Is that on purpose, or would you not be more appropriate to peg or volunteer staff after employee, wherever it is?
Well, you could, you could do that. Uh, we could also, hang on a minute here. Um, we can add volunteer staff right here, as you were suggesting. And, uh, actually then take out 2.2.6 because...
Well, the 2.2.6 would only be addressed to contract employees, or contract, uh, yeah, employees.
Okay. So, just to, and then take out volunteer staff and put contract employees?
Yeah.
The thing I can remember about that timeframe, Randy, we were talking about the whether volunteers, remember that discussion with, were they paid? And did they get some kind of remuneration of any kind? And were they considered part of the staff? And I think that's, it seems like, and I don't know if you remember, Susan, purposely put it in the last sentence to kind of cover, I don't, I don't remember, but there was some kind of delineation we were making. I don't remember what that was.
I don't remember that, but I, I, I do agree that this is a better solution because, particularly because we want to make sure that all of these values are also forwarded to the volunteer staff.
Well, your volunteer staff have the same legal protections as your regular staff, you know, in terms of laws.
I'm not sure about that.
Well, they do from, you, you can't, just because they're not getting paid doesn't mean you can't, you aren't allowed to, whatever, disrespect them, or ignore them, or not notify them, or...
Right. And there are, you know, current, current practice in other kinds of organizations suggests that, you know, volunteers should have their own handbook, their, you know, personnel policies that apply to them so that they know that they have, you know, that they are, um, treated appropriately. Uh, so that's a, that's a common practice. And, but basically, we're extending that, you know, these concerns, it's about treatment of people who are working for us. So, it makes sense to put it up here in the, in the broader view, and then only refer to the, um, contract employees down here. We okay with that?
Well, I just have a question on contract employees. New definition of what contract employees are.
Me, I only have one.
Either that or contracted workers, too?
They're employees. If you're, if you're directing, you're talking about independent contractor?
Yeah.
An independent contractor is not an employee.
Right.
At all. It's not a volunteer. It's a separately, separately contracted.
Right.
I'm the only contract employee you have.
And I don't think we, we haven't had any, ever, so maybe just take that out if that's not even a valid statement.
It's cluttering it up.
Yeah, I take that out, Susan. It's just, it clutters that up because we don't have contract employees.
Well, is, what's Randy considered then?
He's our, he's our employee.
Manager, yeah.
He's an employee of the township.
Yeah.
Or township board.
Or township board, that's all.
Yeah, you have my contract, but I'm the only one.
Yeah.
And it's a separate contract.
You're still a contracted employee.
Yeah, but the thing is, is he's, yeah, but he's...
My contract specifies, my contract specifies that your policies apply to me.
Okay, got it?
Yep.
Ready to move?
Yeah.
We're getting into, uh, some financial ones now. So, this is, uh, 2.3 is about compensation and benefits for all employees. And, um, so you have some things here that, you know, are specific to your organization, to, to your township, about the collective bargaining units. Uh, that's not part of standard language. That's because you have them there. We got contract workers here as well. Um, so, any arrangements that you have, we don't want to cause or allow fiscal jeopardy or jeopardize the public image. So, going beyond that, um, there are a number of things here about the, uh, the township manager not being able to change his, uh, or her own benefits, um, unilaterally. Uh, how we employ people, the whole current compensation and benefits. Uh, this is going to be the standard. Um, other organizations use the market, uh, in, you know, professional and geographic market, but you're using a different system here. Uh, so is there anything, and, and this one is, um, an interesting one, and I do want to just call it to your attention, to create obligations over a longer term other than revenues can save as projected, and in no event longer than one year. Uh, so, you can't, this is basically saying you can't enter into a multi-year contract.
Yeah, that's a problem.
So, this is something that was specific for your organization, and if it should be deleted, I, I would definitely take it out if you're going to have multiple.
Reason for that being in there, we always have multi-year contracts.
Take it out?
The road project is a multi-year contract.
Well, we want to leave the second part of that in though, don't we?
Uh, wait a minute.
We want losses of revenue.
Um, okay. Do you want to keep that, the losses of revenue in?
I don't know how we reward it, create other issues.
Well, you always have that because you cannot go into a deficit budget, so you have to make reductions. With loss of revenue, you have to adjust your budget to compensate for that loss of revenue because you cannot go deficit.
We make sure that the next manager follows that, if we have to.
Well, that's the law. I mean, that, that is township law. You cannot have a deficit budget.
And how do we even have this?
Now, Lynn, I would suggest not even trying to second guess why it's there, but the question is, is it a shared value now?
Yeah, okay.
So, um, I, I didn't, I, I did adapt it while you were talking. Uh, I don't know if you still, if you need it though.
I don't think so.
Take it out?
I guess so.
A lot of that come up if you read your monthly statements, as to where you're at all the time, too. You know that between your revenue and your expense.
Take it out.
Yeah.
You can't do it before we...
No.
Okay.
Look at what they have in their fund balance.
Yeah.
Do you have a, currently a, a retirement plan for employees?
Yes.
Okay, so is the language that's in 2.3, the new 2.3.4, is that appropriate? Is it a defined benefit plan?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I have a question on 2.3.1.
Yes.
I assume that this is referring to, uh, manager's contract. Isn't the manager under contract?
Yes.
But aren't you, isn't it more appropriate to say that he can't change the benefits package tied into his contract as, as opposed to the other employees?
Well, if you, if you remember, okay, so all of these policies are about the unilateral authority of the township manager. And so, we're basically saying you can't change your compensation. Unless, let's say, you know, there's an overall shift in how you deal with health insurance. Uh, and, and so if every employee gets it, then, then it's okay for, uh, your township manager to get that same thing as well, uh, in alignment with the, the other employees, but...
Way upward out.
Yeah.
What if his, what if his contract, what if his contract doesn't align with the benefits package for the rest of the employees?
I wouldn't change that. You would, board would.
Why is it there?
But that wouldn't apply, so can you actually make that statement?
I mean, basically, this is, this is basically saying that, you know, the man... I mean, basically, this is, this is saying that, you know, the manager is not going to be able to change his own comp and benefits package. I mean, if you want to just keep it at, up through package, period, you can do that.
Compensation and benefits package defined in his contract?
Yeah, yes. Right now. But if you were to hire a manager that was not a contract employee, which is a regular employee like everybody else, then that would apply.
Okay.
Right now, my contract specifies that, my contract says I can't, I get the same thing everybody else does. And if you change things, I might...
Well, I would, I would think if we, if we hired a manager that was not going to be under contract, that, that would...
You would need that.
Necessitate a review of that policy.
Yes.
But you might not be here to remember that.
Well, but see, that's just to remember though, next board, change whatever they want. So, you know, I don't know that you should be thinking about hamstringing the next governing body because they can change it.
Right.
Make the changes.
No, I'm just saying that if the next board wasn't aware of this, I mean, we hope that they go through this.
The question is, this board right now, let's say I retire next year, still got a year and a half on your contract, on your, on your term of office, and you decide to hire just a staff and a manager not under contract, then that would apply, then that would be your... That I, that person would not have any ability to change their compensation or benefits without board approval. That's it.
But most managers in everywhere have a contract with the board.
Unless you change the structure.
Yeah, unless you change the structure.
Unless you change the structure and just make it somebody that is a regular, not under a separate contract.
I would just think that if that was referred to the contract there, if you got to the position where you were going to change the method in which you have a manager employed, that you would...
You'd be aware.
Go back and make the changes that are required to accommodate it.
And that might be, I didn't know what my note meant off to the side that says keep their contract separate with a question marks, but it's probably what I was thinking at the time.
We have, you do have a policy about the contract down here, that you shall negotiate a contract. So, which will stipulate the comp and benefits for the managers, so that's consistent?
Okay, so yeah, I want to...
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I mean, if you decide to hire a manager that's not going to be under contract, then there's a lot of things in there that have to change.
Right.
It would have to be reviewed.
And the board would not be in compliance with its own policies at that point. So yes, change the policy or get on, get on board.
So this needs to come out, correct?
No, I changed, all I changed was as defined in the management contract.
Sorry.
Rather than accept as done, you know, with the other employees. Is that okay?
Yeah.
That's more clear.
Okay, let's move on.
The only other thing I added was a little sentence on safety equipment. Does it feel that would be necessary that the managers expected to provide? I mean, I did a personnel manual and the union contract addresses that, so I don't know that that's necessary.
What are you talking about man, I'm not following.
So the statement would be the manager shall not deny the use of safety equipment, hard hats, boots, uniforms, salary.
You can't do that.
I would think that's covered under 2.2.
Okay.
That's actually covered under 2.2.4.
That was, I think that discussion was actually because of the fire department head.
You look for a bulletproof vest.
Right, so that would, you know, Randy's reaction, that would be a definition of perhaps, you know, demonstrating how operationally we make sure people are safe by requiring that. I don't think you need to put it in the board's policies.
Okay.
Moving on, more financial stuff. This is about your budgeting and future planning. So the former board preferred to have all of this out instead of in paragraph form, to have it, you know, specifically pulled out so you could see it clearly. But from a values perspective around budgeting in any activity. So to, you can't, the budget cannot materially deviate from the board's ends priorities, which are section one. Cannot deviate from statutory requirements for budgeting, risk fiscal jeopardy, create undue burden on residents, or fail to be derived from a multi-year plan. Is there anything there that anybody has concerns about?
Well, we don't do multi-year plan, we had talked about it way back then.
We can't do, we can't do two-year budgets.
Yeah, we talked about it, so I don't know that the last one...
Well, a multi-year plan is different than a two-year budget. A multi-year plan is like your strategic plan, and you know you're going to have major expenditures next year, so you want to make sure that you've got appropriate reserves, you're not spending those this year so that you have, you know, so it's about how you arrive at the budget that you are being presented. So that multi-year plan is much more about the strategic plan and really looking at the future of where, you know, what are we saving for? What do we, what do we anticipate our biggest expenses will be next year so we have that money?
Problem with saving for it, we're under some statute that we can't really save money and that, that's another problem with that too.
So do you want to take E out?
No.
It says we shall not fail to be, should not be derived from a multi-year plan. We don't, we're not doing that, if we want to do that, we need to change something.
Well, but that's, but that's, that's your, that's your capital improvements plan.
Hmm.
Keep it in, yeah.
You've got that plan, you've got the board committee plan, all these other plans, so you have to leave it in.
That's what I was thinking, but even then the CIP is, yeah.
Should be, CIP should be a multi-year have to have over, you know, the asset management, the cash, the capital, capital plan, your strategic plan, you know. If you're putting your three or five year strategic plan that this is your ultimate goal, then you're going to have to be budgeting for those pieces each year, like we do with Lanesfield, for three years, you know, to get the kitty park stuff.
Plans are, you're setting up what those finances are going to have to be addressed.
I think you should do it in.
Okay.
Okay, if you look at the lower level policies for this one, so, you know, the big question is, you know, how does the board know you've got a good budget or not? And so these are the things that you would be looking at to decide, to determine whether you have a good budget. So you want to make sure that when it's presented, you know, that credible projections are there for all of those categories. You want to make sure that the funds, that income basically is conservatively projected, that is truly a value rather than aggressively projected. You want to make sure that you have the safety reserve in place. The contingency funding for unplanned events and public utilities. And 2.4.5 is your board's budget. So each year you would define what your budget is for governing activities. So if you need a consultant, if you need to bring in somebody to talk to you about economic development, if you are going to workshops and the MTA conference, all of those things would roll into the cost of governance and the board gives that number to Randy and he has to roll it right into the, unedited, roll it into the budget. So those are the lower level policies, any concerns? We're good, moving on. The next policy is financial conditions and it's a fairly lengthy policy. This is all of the policies, or the values, I should say, that relate to how we spend money. The day-to-day in-and-out transactions. So this one is, you know, the values in the broadest policy are we don't want to have fiscal jeopardy, we don't want to exceed statutory limitations on financing or have a material deviation of, you know, the actual expenditures from your board's priorities. So continuing, you'll notice this one is for the management, not just the manager. Because the clerk and the treasurer have a lot to do with this. But this, these are some, you know, this is what the board at that time felt was important from a value perspective. We didn't want to spend more money, you know, that, than you've taken in. Unless you can repay it within 60 days, so that allows for some seasonal stuff, that's 2.5.1. The long-term reserves can only be released by the board, the township management cannot spend that money without it going to the board first. Conducting inter-fund shifting, just to, you know, lots of, that's kind of game playing. You've got in the budget to buy a new computer system, you can't move that money and do something else without, without at least giving the board notice that you're doing it. Then we've got, you know, paying our bills, paying tax payments, all that kind of stuff. I guess the other thing that, number 2.5.7, make a single unbudgeted purchase or commitment of greater than $5,000. So that was a limit that was defined by the board at that, at the time that we created this. And so you get the budget, and so this limitation is anything that's not budgeted for. If there, you know, Randy can spend up to, or the management team can spend up to $5,000 unbudgeted. And then if this, something is going to exceed that, it has to come to you as the body, as the board. So I, is that an appropriate amount?
Purchasing policy.
Why do I have extreme measures from last year? 2.5.6, I just got extreme measures on the right-hand side.
When we added 2.5.6, that was intended to not, to look, in the case of emergency services, you know, like you have a flood, you have a tornado, you have a tsunami from Lake Michigan, from Lake Superior, you know, the township manager could do whatever it takes to assure the health, safety and welfare of the township residents without getting your approval.
That way.
But this is township management, so we need to...
Clerk and treasurer as well.
Right, so are we consistently talking about the threesome through each step of this, right?
Well, just because each of them have a different, different spending authorities. I mean, and all of those spending authorities go into the overall budget. This is intended to apply to all three of them.
So does that mean all three of them have to confer on this?
No, no, it does not.
$5,000 independently?
However, you, you're right, you know, if everybody's spending up to $5,000, you know, where is the, where is the...
We talked about manager spending authority before, but I, I didn't think about it as the team part. So I just want to be clear on what we're saying, if this is the manager or this is the triad here.
This is the team, but what, what it's saying is, remember, it's saying unbudgeted purchase.
Right.
I would like to make a suggestion, see how well it floats out there. That, to me, that seems like an extremely small amount of money. And rather than look at the dollar value, would we be better off to make it, oh, say 1% of the approved general fund budget?
It already said unapproved, it's not part of it.
No, unbudgeted purchase.
Make a single unbudgeted purchase or commitment of...
Based on a percentage of...
Based on a percentage of the approved general fund budget. This year, 1% would be $14,000.
And that fits future board.
Goes to future boards and as, as the general fund increases, we don't have to go back and keep revisiting this, it's 1%. Right now it's 0.3%.
Here's an example, when we had the snowstorm and I had to go out and get the snowmobile, that was an unbudgeted purchase that I, that I did, it exceeded my spending authority, but we had to get to the pump station to make sure pumping the water. So that would, if it had fallen under that, I would have, I would have violated that policy and I would have to justify it to the board.
But that's not, this is not the management team, you didn't ask your partners.
Well, I, no, I did, I think you and I talked about it.
I think that's a good suggestion.
One hole in the ground is $10,000 when you have to water.
$5,000 is...
Yeah, I'm not so much concerned with, I just want to make sure who this applies to.
Who else they have authority to do something.
Well, and remember, it's unbudgeted, but I wouldn't feel comfortable anyway unless going out and talking to the manager and the supervisor and the treasurer or I would have to do something in my, in my world, I'm not going to buy any, I don't have to buy anything in my world. It's more than, and the treasurer also, I mean, we, we're not buying things like the manager would be.
So should I change that to manager?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the clerk and the treasurer don't spend that kind of money.
What if the manager's gone?
We don't have the authority to spend that kind of money.
What if the manager's gone?
Well, this would give it to you, that's what I'm trying to make clear.
Where do we want to go?
I would say the manager or the supervisor.
So then, but then you've got, because this category takes in a bunch of different ones, so you might have, you have to read each one to make sure it applies to the manager.
What do you think Susan, what would it be? Because it's really the manager that's dealing with this, it's not really...
Well, in that case, should I, you know, I want, just want to be consistent also, so should I change it to township manager at the top in the broader policy as well?
Yes.
Yes.
It makes, it definitely makes the accountability much clearer, the role delineation. We're good?
Yes.
Do you want to limit the managers to a single unbudgeted purchase?
Yeah, it's like you suggested, the percentage.
That's fine, but percent.
One time, you're saying?
Well, I'm just saying that it says single.
It says a single unbudgeted purchase.
So like one forever? Or one a month, or one a budget, or, yeah.
I would just say make a unbudgeted purchase.
There you go.
Or you could say unbudgeted purchases.
Yes. Yeah, that's better.
Is that all right?
Well, that means, that means it's accumulating over the year and when it hits 14, it's zero.
Yeah, it's one interpretation. Fine.
That'd be my interpretation.
Randy's interpretation.
You can leave it as a single purchase.
How many single purchases can you make in a year?
Can you do one a week or...
I would think we need about the second or third $14,000 purchase, somebody'd see it.
Yeah, I saw the snow bill.
And, and we'd be asking some real hard questions about it.
What if you're totaling an amount?
I would think you just leave it as a single unbudgeted purchase. I mean, he does a report every month, and if he made a $14,000 unbudgeted purchase, we would certainly hear about it or he would violate many other policies that are in front of this one.
Well, nobody else pointed out the snow bill. So they either missed it, didn't see it, I was the only one that did. So unless seven of us are reading all of our packets to the nth degree...
I can't imagine him getting $14,000 past earnings.
If you remember, when that happened, I sent a memo to all, I sent a...
You did.
We knew it was saying, this happened today.
And that's, that's...
It had to come to me to get money.
That's why I would just think single one budget. I mean, if you're going to make it the total, you'd be better off to leave it single at 5,000 because...
I think it's single if we're satisfying.
We're good?
Yeah.
There's another... There's another place under communication and support to the board that we can define that, you know, if any, you know, any major purchases could be, you know, should be communicated to the board when we get there, we just...
Does it say accrued or approved?
Where you at now?
257.
The approved general fund budget, yeah. Approved.
Approved?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. And 2511, this in yellow, those were added after conversation of the, the last board that, that looked at this. They wanted to make sure that the unused money went to the right places.
Susan, backing up to 25, 258.
Yeah.
Do you need a policy there? There's a law that says that.
Uh, this is, this one comes from a standard set of, of policies and is not customized for townships. So if there's a law that says you can't do that without board action, then we should take it out.
Yeah, there's a, there's a law that says that the board is the only one that can then either acquire or dispose of property, real property. Management doesn't have authority to do that.
Then we should take it, uh, well, okay, so let's just, this is, the law actually says that?
Yeah, township board's the only one that can. It has to be done by an action of the township board, either in closed session or open session. Closed session if it's buying property, open session if it's selling property.
Okay, so if it's in the law, then we don't need to put it in. Everybody okay with that? Everything else all right? If snow, moving on. This is about asset protection. We want to make sure that the assets are not unprotected, inadequately maintained or unnecessarily risked. And this one is directed at township management. I, question is, does it really belong to the manager or, or does it apply to the team? So all of these things are in terms of all of the assets, we've got, you know, issues about insurance, we've got maintenance in here, we've got risk management, and we've got exposure to liability, we've got issues around sole source vendors, and we've got, I mean, it's, it's, it, everything that would be considered an asset, including your public image, is in here. Does anybody have any concerns about asset protection, any piece of it?
So we're making this the manager again?
The management.
The management? So I had written 266?
Yeah.
The management, not management team. Management team, if you're defining that as the manager, the clerk and the treasurer, you also, initially, you have to, you have to include the trustees who have fiduciary responsibility.
Okay, so just management then?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. So going back to, to, what is your concern on 266, Lynn?
I had added more, I mean, under B, more than $2,000. I don't know the context of that.
$10,000 or more.
So the 266, that, without the exceptions, are intended to assure that you're getting best value. So you're going to do an RFP. You're going to assure that there's no conflicts of interest. You know, you're doing comparative pricing for anything over $2,000.
Right, so he can do, this said 2,000. So I think I was qualifying it by saying not exactly 2,000, it could be more than 2,000.
It could be, at what point do you want to make sure that they're getting comparative pricing? That's the question.
2,000 or more, or whatever that number is.
It could be 10,000, it could be 100,000, whatever you feel from a value perspective, you want to make sure you're doing comparative pricing.
I remember, I procurement policy is 2,000.
Yeah, I think all we'd want to do is just add 2,000 or more without having obtained
Right now, your, your policy is if it's more than $2,000, you have to have quotes.
Right.
If it's more than 5,000, you have to have, you have to have at least three quotes. If it's 5,000, you go for a bidding process and if anything over 20,000 is a full-blown RFP.
Right.
It's, that's your current policy. Yeah, that's your current policy.
So that policy, Randy, would become the internal purchasing policy.
Correct.
And doesn't need to be here and it's compliant. So that would be the operation, an operational definition for this particular one. And with the two exceptions, when you're making, you don't, if you're spending more than $2,000, you don't have to worry about comparative prices or long-term quality and also with sole source vendors.
Is 2,000 enough?
That's the trigger point.
What?
The trigger point. Anything under 2,000 wouldn't fall into that. But, but is it enough?
2,000 a realistic figure.
Yeah.
Say he's got 3,000.
I think it is because that's what we do. If it's going to be 2,000 bucks or anticipated to be 2,000 or more, we go out and we get at least three comparative quotes.
The city of Marquette has got, it's over 3,000, you gotta go out.
Bid.
Of course, Lynn is always talking about future boards. So the question is simply, is 2,000 enough for now and the future boards?
Well, they can change it, but I think that's...
I think 3,000 would be good.
I mean, 3,000's not, it's just another thousand. It's not a big deal. Missed another thousand.
Got 2,000 here.
He just signed.
You got 3,000 here.
Do you want your four?
That just gives more ability to purchase.
It does.
Oh, does that change the structure then, Randy?
It just gives more authority to purchase.
No, but I mean, you've already said that the structure's already in place for...
It just changes the policy. You would just change the internal policy as well.
Yeah, then it'd have to go up, right?
1,000, 3,000, 3,000, 5,000, and 20,000.
You good? All good with changing it to 3,000?
Yeah, 3,000's good.
Leave the wording the same, but put 3,000 instead of 2.
Yep.
Since we put this into the last five years.
Any, anything else in 2.6? If not, let's move on. 27 should be easy, I'm hoping.
Hang on, one second, sorry.
Okay.
268, can you go back?
Right there.
You see if it also... Auditor standards. Have that crossed out and put Michigan Treasury. So I'm not, cross out board-appointed auditor standards and I have Michigan Treasury.
Why would you do that?
I don't know. No, not auditors, nothing.
What 2.6.8 is talking about is your annual audit.
Yeah.
No, what it's talking about is internal controls for money.
Right, but...
And so the, the audit, you know, if you get a comment from your auditor that says, you know, you're not, you're not doing the documentation or segmentation of duties appropriately, then you've got to make sure that you're, you shift your internal controls to allow for that.
Right.
That's what the intent was. Does this change...
Oh, okay.
Appropriate?
It was, he's got it on his copy. Mine, I have it written on, so...
Mine's in 2012.
Okay, well, they got changed then, so that's all right.
We're good? We're okay with this language?
Okay.
Michigan Treasury auditing standards?
Yeah.
It wasn't, should be a capital S. Okay, moving on. 2.7, ends focus of grants and contracts. Basically, this is prohibition about chasing money. The only money we want to chase is that it's going to help us achieve our ends. Any problems with this one?
Can you explain this a little bit?
Right, so Randy, does the township ever get grants?
Yes.
So this is basically saying that you can't, that, that all the grants that you get should be toward achieving an ends or if there are grants that will help you, you know, stay in, you know, create systems for operations so that, you know, so maybe a new computer system. You get a grant for a new computer system, you know, for mapping of, of properties and that would be okay because that would create clarity about, you know, it's, it's an operational thing. Whereas if you took on a grant that is perhaps all township, that, that would be, all township residents would stop smoking. That's not part of your ends, that's not part of anything, so that kind of a grant would be prohibited. We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. 2.8 is the emergency township manager succession. And basically, we're just clarifying here that the supervisor would be taking over if the township manager were not in place. And we wanted to make sure that other personnel would cover all the other job functions and to make sure that, you know, critical passwords and key information are available to the supervisor in this case. Any concerns? And this one was added to based on conversations that we had with the last board. Everybody all right with that?
I think I know where this came from.
It's funny how this is all coming back.
Well, the typical one that you, is that it's not okay for the township manager to have no, no less than two employees who would know about board processes. And so this makes perfect sense that it's the supervisor that would assume those duties.
Well, it makes perfect sense in charter townships since all of township managers' functions are delegated from the supervisor.
Exactly. Exactly. Okay, moving on. 29 is another one that was customized for the township. I'm sure that the township manager will not, shall not fail to explore strategic partners and intergovernmental cooperation. So we can't operate in an insular way. We're always got to be looking for strategic partnerships and recognizing that we got to work collaboratively with our neighbors. Any concerns about that one?
Been trying to do it for years.
Okay. It doesn't say specifically the city of Marquette. Okay, the last policy in 210 is communication support to the board. And this is an important policy because when you delegate as deeply as you're delegating to the township manager, you want to have some assurances that you're going to get the information you need to be informed. So that's what this policy is about. So we want to make sure you, you know, there are two sections to this. 10 point, or 210.1 is all about the things that you need to be, you will be notified about as they occur. And so you're, the monitoring, that's part of this system. Number 210.12 has a lot involved. So this guarantees that you would have some, you know, regular reports on what's going on. And this information might come to you. In fact, Randy, your, your management reports really are in response to this policy. And, you know, the more you can make that clear, the better it is, you know, which policy it really responds to. But most of the time, it's going to be 210.12.
And most of the time, that's going to be in email communication when things are happening. It's not going to be, you know, like printed in the board packet.
Yep. So it just says, don't let them be unaware. So how you do that is up to you. Continuing on here, if the board, so Randy has the authority and the obligation in this policy in 210.13, that if you guys aren't doing what you said you were going to do in your policies, he has the ability to let you know that. So, you know, it is, it's a check and balance that if you start on a slippery slope of not paying attention to your policies, Randy has the authority to let you know that. He also in 210.14, you know, if there's going to be any non-compliance like the snowmobile, he needs to tell you that in a timely way. If you want some information, he has to get it for you. If you, apparently you had a report that was in a very complex format for your last meeting, the water report. And so 210.16 says, don't present us anything that's unnecessarily complex.
Well, it's his fault.
Right, but, you know, but that's part of, you know, if, if it's an operational report, you know, he has to, he has to manage that, the presentation of it so that it's not complex or too lengthy. The question about the second half of 210.16, basically that's identifying that, you know, any information about the monitoring, decision preparation, everything else for information only. Couple things about that. So when my, when Randy is sending out a monitoring report, it requires that the board actually do something with it in advance of the meeting. So it should be identified as a monitoring report in some way. If it's coded in the subject header of an email, if it's some way, it's got to be differentiated so you know you have to respond to it. The decision preparation is if, for anything that you're going to be discussing actually during the meeting. And then the for information only is everything else. You know, in, in your last, your last agenda, you had a lot of for information only, that the board does not need to approve. You know, the committee reports, the correspondence, those things don't require board action. So therefore, they would be considered information only. You can acknowledge that you've received them, which, you know, but that's, that's really all that the board needs to do. Anyway, my question is, is that a helpful piece of this policy? Do you want to keep that in or do you want to just, do you want to delete that?
Number six you're talking about?
I'm talking about the second half of number six, of 210.16. Do you see that as a helpful thing or not?
I don't see why I wouldn't keep that in.
I don't either.
I don't know why it's necessary.
61 half doesn't mean that.
All right, it's gone. And we've got some things there for transparency and giving things to the clerk in a timely way. And then the 210.2 is the second lower level policy for this. And it's basically assuring that the, that the manager is providing you the logistical assistance you need as necessary. So those were additions from the last time. And then 210.3 is impeding the board's holism. You want to make sure that, you know, the township manager is accountable to the full board and not individuals on the board. And so that's what this is intended to create. And with particularly answering questions by the board so that it goes out to everybody, not just an individual, so that everybody knows what's going on. Do you feel that those policies, particularly what's in 210.3, is necessary and you want to keep it?
We do it.
We do it now, so...
Okay. Great. Great. Then let's keep it in, because that's not something that, that is necessarily intuitive. And if that's working for you, then let's just keep it in.
Can we go back a second?
Yep.
Did everybody agree to take that second part out of six?
I believe so.
About a couple ones believe it in. It also talks about the monitoring assurance, is that the part we were eliminating in six? I mean, we also eliminate here.
The monitoring is, I mean, this was more advisory to how to organ, help the board, help organize information that goes to the board. So, it wasn't saying anything that there wouldn't be monitoring, it's just, how do we identify what is monitoring and what is not?
Okay.
I don't think you lose a lot by taking that out. It's a convenience. Anything else in two ten?
I have a note here. But it also says three, 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 two, one.
I'm sorry if, watch your eyes here, three, 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 two, one. That's about conflicts of interest?
Yep.
Okay, I know where this was.
For the board?
Yeah, that was in case we had members of the, it was Delwood more, the fire department at the time. A member of the board on the fire department that was voting on fire department issues, which we kind of questioned.
Well, this is a little different, my note, but I think.
We're good?
Talks about first, my comp, yeah, personal, okay, yes, we're good.
Let's go to ends, because this is the key to everything. Sorry. So, the ends policies are all about what you expect to happen in the township. And this is basically the mandate to your township manager, that this is what we want to create. So, the board at the time, I wrote this language, I took it, I created it from a conversation that the board had, conceptually, about what we want, what they wanted the community of Marquette Township to be. So, there are basically four primary things that is, first of all, a vibrant community, where people want to live. If you look at one point one, it, you know, conceptually, is about healthy, a healthy lifestyle community. One point two.
Three.
Everybody there?
We're going backwards.
Page three.
One point two is about green space and natural resources being maintained and balanced with controlled growth. One point three was about maintaining an infrastructure that either met or exceeds, meets or exceeds state minimums with controlled growth capacity building. And then, one point four was about controlled growth in the residential and business development. This is, this particular policy is so critical to moving, moving the township forward in a way that, you know, really lifts up your governance. And so, what you put here is what then drives all of the decisions about programs and services that is part of your operations. All of your operations are somehow tied with this. The organization, the staffing should all be tied with this. And so, when we're talking about the board-approved ends, this is the change you want to make in the community. So, does, do the decisions that were made previously still stand today? And does this represent your value system?
Yes, most of them are, are still there. And we are improving on some.
Okay. So, when, you know, when Randy were to, you know, to create a strategic plan, it should be, how do we, how do we further, you know, move these things? That's, that's what should be in your strategic plan. And this is what you are delegating to Randy and the staff to create.
And this would be, Susan, you're basically, your yearly plan of work, basically, right? Looking at these. Figuring out where you're going, right?
Right, and so, the yearly, the successive yearly plans of work would be, how do we, you know, install or, you know, improve or enhance, you know, the things that are on this list? So, for instance, one point, one point one, you know, access to safe well-lit paths throughout the township. You know, you might only have 60% of your township, you know, well-lit right now. So, in the annual plan of work, we're going to enhance that to be 68% by the end of the year. So, and in the interpretation of that, you know, that would be an interpretation of this policy. And Randy would need to give justification, why 68%? Why aren't we going to 90% this year? You know, so there are choices that need to be made, you know, with just one point, one point one alone, of how much we're going to invest in lighting, where it's going to be installed, and, you know, and, you know, why are those choices being made? And that's all part of the operational definition that Randy would provide to you. And you decide whether it's a reasonable interpretation or not.
I had added to one, 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 preface, access with four season. And I think that's before we had talked about the plowing and the sidewalk areas and all that stuff. So, I don't know if that's still something we'd want to focus on, to say, four season access to safe well-lit pathways.
Just say access to safe, it covers everything.
Okay. Like I said, we hadn't gotten into plowing and stuff then.
Right, four season would be an interpretation, but if it's a value, I mean, it's kind of hard to separate between what is, you want to, you want to make sure that you give any reasonable interpretation. You stop making policy when you can accept any reasonable interpretation. Is there anything, let's just take a, take a look one by, look at one point one in all of the lower level policies. So, this is about the healthy lifestyle community. And we're basically identifying, you know, part of healthy lifestyle is having a sense of community and multi-generational activities, and people engaging in the democratic process, and, you know, taking pride in the township. And it's about how people speak about the township. So, we've identified at some length about what is a healthy lifestyle community. Any concerns about those?
In one, one, two, two, I had crossed out engagement and put encouragement. I don't know that that makes a difference.
It does, because engagement is a result, encouragement is an activity. So, and that goes back to one of that extra policy that we were talking about in the treatment of constituents, to let people know when there are, you know, activities that they can participate in. So, Randy's interpretation of engagement, the democratic process, might be, you know, 15% of the population. You know, maybe that's the baseline. And in the coming year, as part of his annual plan of work, he wants to increase that to 20%. And so, he may actually do some things that would encourage greater civic engagement, like cleaning up the river, cleaning up the beach, you know? So, those kinds of things that could encourage a high level of activity from the citizens. Anything in one point two?
I want, I want to go back to one.
Okay.
One. Where access to safe, well-lit pathways throughout the township. They, I'm assuming that the word pathways is intended to mean roadways and everything?
Yes.
Okay.
And rivers, river pathways.
Okay, but about half the community doesn't, doesn't want excessively lit.
They want dark skies.
Pardon?
They want no light pollution.
Right, so, so why couldn't we add where desired? If it's not desired, you wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to, an attempt being made to put excessively lit pathways where people didn't want it. And that's what we have, we, about half the community would rather that wasn't the case.
Are you saying the same thing when you say access to safe?
So, the where desired could be part of the interpretation also. You know, I mean, if the township's going to spend some money, I guess one of the things that I would suggest is, under the green space and natural resources, I'm wondering if you want to say something about dark skies? Is there a value about dark skies?
I'm only suggesting that you add where desired. If you do that, then.
Well, it's right, we do have mixed, mixed community when it comes time, comes down to lighting.
If you just, if you just do that, then that ends the problem.
Okay. So, I put it here immediately after the path, the well-lit pathways.
Where desired throughout the township.
Why don't you just leave it say access to safe pathways? And just remove well-lit, because some of the pathways we're not going to be able to light.
You want to do that?
Well, some, we're never going to light all of them, so.
Can't. Some of them we physically cannot light.
Safe, safe.
What makes them safe?
Take the lighting right out of it.
Right, great, that's a good improvement, let's do that.
Great, perfect. Anything else in one point one? Okay. Go into one point two, green space and natural resources, got to maintain the balance. And access to solitude maintained, do you want to say anything about some dark skies here?
That would be where you would do it.
Yep.
You can say which may include, oh, okay.
Coming a big, a big thing, dark sky parks.
Yeah.
Dark sky parks.
Is there something we want to add to our ends though?
What's the value around dark skies?
There is no value per se, not a monetary value, it's a quality of.
Right, it's about the quality of life. So, what is, what is the value about quality of life? I mean, do we want to keep it? You know, dark sky balance, you know, with safety or dark sky?
Dark, the dark skies would be balanced with development.
I, I don't think you need to add anything. I don't think you need to add one point, two point two, just leave it out, we'll deal with it on the board.
Okay, but if it's something that, you know, you really want to maintain, I would, I would encourage you to add it here.
Well, but we could just add it to that statement, access to solitude maintained, which may include dark sky. Or skies.
Well, you don't want to put too many.
No.
Adjectives behind it.
Because it's a different concept though.
It's going to change.
Yeah.
It's going to change, and it's going to change as you change the board.
Because I don't see dark skies in the township.
What would you think about something like access to solitude balanced with development?
Well, you got that up here.
Okay.
So.
Add anything.
No, just leave.
And all dark skies, if someone wants to see the stars.
Yeah.
But, but that deals with your requirement for development being lit.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, that's the.
If we want to try to have a spot, we're going to have to buy the property, we can't tell somebody else they can't have their lights.
Like Springer said, you can just hold one.
No flashlight, but no, but no flashlights.
So, this might be something that you, you do want to deal with, maybe not today, but, you know, if, if there is a value to maintain dark skies in the township in some way, you definitely want to add it here.
Where you would want to do that would be like sugarloaf or hot. That's where you would designate dark skies areas, is that area.
Right.
Lighting was already down rather than up.
And dark skies is already addressed in lighting, or in the sub.
Okay.
Add one here, one, to make it one, two, two, and put promote and protect recreational and natural resources.
Done that by me again?
Promote and protect recreational and natural resources.
So, what would be, so these two things are about what we do, what is the result that we, that we would create if we did that?
Conflict.
With whom?
Well, you're going to have some that will argue that protecting natural resources means fewer bike trails.
That's your responsibility.
Well, I'm just saying.
That's your job.
I'm just saying, we've got that segment out there, and you got people right now complaining they can't walk because they run off the trails by bikes. So, I mean, it's.
And our.
One point two probably covers that, green space and natural resources maintained and balanced with controlled growth.
Yeah. Okay. Look at one point three. This is all about, all about your public service infrastructure.
I think we do well there, reliable links. Technology, road network improvements, traffic control and safety. There's nothing wrong with that at all.
We got everything covered?
Biggest thing about road improvements, it's all county, but we took it on ourselves to do it.
Right.
On one point, three point two, I suggest you take out the word times.
That's where I had made some notes too, I took out improved.
Just leave it alone, with a period.
With the response, yeah.
If you, um, yeah, so we've got, you know, what we're trying to do is meet or exceed state minimums here. Or maintain. So, we've identified that we wanted the fire and EMS response to be improved, is that still the case?
Yeah.
They're always, they're always trying to improve what they're doing.
Okay.
I had just added system, but I don't know that that's important either. The whole system.
I know some will argue the word improved, that implies that it's issue in some manner. What would be a different word to use there, meaning that you want to progress it?
Enhanced?
I would enhance rather than improve.
I have effective, but I don't know that that's definitive enough.
I don't worry, effective, right, no.
Well, I think what we're trying to say is constantly.
Enhanced, I think is a good word for that.
Yeah, that, that, that's.
That's better, yeah.
It's less directing.
Okay. All right. And so, let's look at one point four, controlled growth.
Can we take up, in one, three, three, let's see, one of the ones. Can we take up in 1.3.3, let's see, one of the ones, next time I'm sitting on the other side. Liable links for world support information technology, do we need personal and business?
Um, possibly not.
Well, you're talking.
Enhanced with an ED, no, you don't need. Enhance, yeah. So 1.3.2. You don't need.
We're talking about two different ones, Susan.
Talking about 2 and 3.
1.3.2, you want to improve, enhance, take the D off. Pick the D's up.
No, 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 you gotta, it's always put in, it's, it's not about what we do, it's about the result. So when we take the D off, then it, it talks about what we're doing versus the result.
Yes, reliable networks, I think in 1.3.3 you'd be talking about expanding the fiber network and things like that for personal as well as business use, residential.
It's just, it's not necessary.
So I, we can take personal and business out, I was just thinking that, you know, business needs are, are definitely more aggressive than, than personal needs. So you could, you could create, you know, ways, you know, you could have just fiber, fiber lines, but you might need T1 lines for, you know, to support businesses better. So that.
Broadband?
Yeah. So I, I don't know if, if it makes a difference or not.
Well, but we want to support all of it, why, I just meant, why save, why save personal business, what else is there?
No, there isn't.
Yeah, so we're just supporting the needs.
Do you want to put all information technology needs or?
I think you leave a general, because it's going to change. Well, we have access to all, we have, you know, one internet provider, we have, you know, we don't have a lot of options.
One thing that's not here and not represented is mobile technology.
Well, wouldn't that fall under the information technology?
Yeah, that's why I was thinking just have it.
Okay.
Because mobile technology, we think of as, you know, internet's mobile and hotspots and.
Okay. The other thing that, that's not, I'm not seeing where it would be represented here is like if you wanted to do energy, energy infrastructure.
Energy optimization.
Or, I mean, are, are you in the business of, you know, wind and?
We're not in the energy business, we're an end user, we're not a producer.
We don't have any effect.
But do you want to, do you want to bring it to the township?
No. Not really at this time, we really don't have options right now.
Okay. Well, and see, if you put it, if, if you had interest and you put it in here, that would, that would create a mandate for Randy to begin working on it to create options for you. You know, you think about it in terms of, of the future of the township, what is it that you want to see in the township? So that, that's probably not a conversation for today, but it might be a future conversation. And if you decided you wanted to create energy access through wind and solar, you would probably put it under 1.3. Okay?
Where are we going to put that nuclear power plant?
Oh, on the Eagles Nest Road.
We have just two minutes left. Take a look at 1.4, please.
1.4.
Yeah, there you go.
1.4.
I'm thinking we probably put 1.4.2 in there for youth on purpose, but I just think we should just do creative jobs, period, unless we feel like we want to.
Yeah, I think creative jobs is just. I think going back to the discussion, I think the for youth in there was because you want to try and keep, you know, migration out, keep it to a minimum.
But if we want you to focus on youth jobs, that's a totally, if we want to do that, that's fine, but.
That could be an interpretation also.
That would, that would fall into the realm of targeting specific development areas in the township for specific types of jobs, light industry and things such as that, and your zone doesn't allow that, doesn't do that.
So take out for youth on 1.4.2 and just leave it, creative jobs?
The kids will fall in there anyway.
Okay. So.
Dollar an hour minimum wage, maybe not.
We have completed going through this policy manual. And I will send you the, the edited version as we have discussed it here in, in the 15th. And so when you are ready to adopt it, there is a specific way to adopt this policy manual. And it is that I move to adopt the new board policy manual and rescind all old board policy and remanded to staff for reconsideration as operational policy. I will put that motion in writing for you. The idea is that, you know, all the policies that the board has adopted previously, most of them are operational, which they've now delegated, if you go this direction, they will be delegated to the, the operational organization, to Randy. And, and so if he wants to incorporate those into existing policy, internal policy, he can do that. But it's this policy that would supersede then everything else that's gone on before in terms of what the board has approved regarding operations and, and board process. Does that make sense?
Hi Sue.
Yep.
We had two archaic policy books, three ring binders, they're in my office.
Yep.
I was under the impression that you and Randy and Dennis had gone through this all when you created this a few years ago?
As I recall, we actually did review for, you know, is there anything that needed to be pulled into here that made sense? And, and so we pulled in, there wasn't a lot because so much of it was, was operational, it didn't make sense to do that.
So we have a, we have a policy that talks about the board meeting and it says that it starts at seven o'clock and that the public has five minutes or unlimited discussion on the second public comment, those kinds of things. Do we, what do we, do we have to go back and look at these then if we, or just give it all to Randy and let him put it into the, his policies?
No.
What are you saying, Randy?
I'm just saying if you adopt this.
Precedes everything else.
It precedes everything else that has happened before, so the way it is now is the way it's going to be from now on, so.
And if.
Something like that about the procedure of the board, structure of the board meeting, how does that go away?
It, by that motion, that all policy, all, you know, existing board policy is rescinded.
What you're talking about now is, is how you as supervisor are going to manage your board meeting. So it's a guideline.
Doesn't matter.
It's a guideline, you would, you would establish your guideline of how you're going to run your meeting.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's.
It, it wouldn't necessarily be a policy as much as it would be a guideline, because an ex-supervisor, let's say you don't run again and let's say Dan runs for supervisor and wins, he would establish his guidelines of how he's going to run his meeting.
So we don't have the structure of five policies?
No.
Right, and Lynn, like policy 3.1.3, you know, the board's going to enforce upon itself whatever discipline is needed to govern with excellence. So that's it.
Good.
Okay? Everybody good?
Yeah.
So the, the motion we made that I emailed you, does that, does that work properly? Is that?
Well, there was no attachment Lynn, on what you emailed me.
Just in an email, I put it bold. To accept MTA.
That's different.
Oh, that's different.
That's different.
Yeah, that was the MTA's philosophy of policy governance and what Sue was talking about is actual policy to adopt policy governance.
Right.
The question, Susan, I sent you our travel policy, is that, are you going to put that in to this manual somewhere or?
Did you send me, okay, you sent me the employees' travel policy, did you send me the board's travel policy?
Well, it's the same policy.
It's the same policy.
It's an operational policy, yeah. So then the manager does delegate it.
Um, because the way it's represented, it does not apply to the board, it only applies to employees. I have that, if you want me to incorporate that into the cost of governance, I can do that.
Yeah, because it's actually, the board follows that one also, so.
Well, the policies don't apply to, my policies don't apply to the elected officials.
But we follow.
Yeah, you do, you historically followed it, but it didn't.
It'd be good to set us.
I can't smack you if you don't do it and you put it that way.
So I, I'm happy to incorporate that in, I just wanted to make sure it was the right policy, because I saw it as just the employee, so.
It would be that cost one.
Yep, so that would go into the cost of governance, I, I'm happy to pull that in.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, and I'll send you then, what is your next meeting that you might be entertaining this policy manual?
5th.
July 5th.
Either that or it'd be the, what is it, the 20th?
Yeah, 5th or 20th.
Maybe we need to have it on July 20th to let everyone digest this for a few weeks. And then on the 20th weekend, I guess.
Oh wait.
Or 19.
19.
18. How's that sound, Susan?
That's fine, I can get it to you this week yet, and, you know, so however you want to schedule that is entirely up to you.
That'll give everyone a couple of weeks to look at it and any more questions, I guess, they can have, so.
I just want to reiterate that the only thing that's policy governance are those principles. And all the work that we just did is in response to those principles. And, you know, the ends that we just looked at, follow the definition of what an end's policy is, the executive limitations, that's all incorporated. Those, so as you read the policy manual, when you get it completely, you might want to look at how those principles are integrated in. But when you say you're doing policy governance, it just means that you are in alignment with the principles. And the board policy manual is the Marquette, the charter township of Marquette's way, you know, this is, this is our book, it's our customized approach. And if you have the ability to change any policies that you want to change, but to do it in a formal way, you know, instead of just saying, well, I don't want to do this anymore.
We cleared the meeting.
We don't have any public left and some of our board left and we don't really need to adjourn since it's a session, but it's 6:07.
All righty. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good 4th of July.
You too.